Need to call us back to order for the regular meeting, May 22, 2017, of the Board of Education. First item of business, do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll move on to special recognition of student, staff, and community partners. First is our debate and forensic student honors Lawrence High School with Jeff Plinsky, English teacher, debate and forensic coach.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Plinsky, I am the... There we go. Come on up, y'all. I'm the forensic coach at Lawrence High School. Some of the students in front of you here are our students, we are happy to come before you tonight, we've got three different celebrations all happening. First, we had an extraordinary year of student achievement, we had 13 students named Academic All-American, including the students you see before you, but I do want to recognize we have some who were not able to be here this evening, so I want to make sure they get recognized as well. This year's Academic All-Americans are Therim Chadri, Natalie Cote, Bryce Dunn, Louis Ferris, Sung Ho Wong, Chizado Kamura, Jas McNair, Opera May Mishra, Bridget Smith, Abby Treff, Emily Walthol, and Claire Walther. And to put this in perspective, the last two years, we've had two Academic All-Americans each year, and so this particular group of students has put a real emphasis on their studies and their grades, and their test scores demonstrate that. We're also pleased to announce that this group brought home what we believe to be Lawrence High's first ever state speech trophy, we were third place at state. I've got records that go back to the late 1980s, and there's no indication of a trophy that far back, and so I'm happy to be proven wrong if somebody knows something I don't know, but we do believe, we do believe that this is Lawrence High's first. And we do have some state champions with us that we want to make sure we recognize. Your state champion this year in informative speaking was Natalie Cote. And Natalie is actually a double state champion, she and her brother Jared are the state champions of duo interpretation. And our third state champion was not able to be here this evening, but that's Claire Walther, and she was the state champion in impromptu speaking. Finally, we do want to recognize our national qualifiers, we have six students who qualified in five different events, will be traveling to Birmingham, Alabama in June to compete at the national level. The brother and sister Cote in their duo, Claire Walther in foreign extemporaneous speaking, Veta Petrovich in domestic extemp, Louis Ferris in informative speaking, and then Bridget Smith is our member of the World Schools Debate Team from East Kansas. And so, ladies and gentlemen, your forensic squad.
All right, next item on, next group for recognition is the Fair Housing Poster Contest Winners, Danika Moore Equity Facilitator. Yeah, the Lawrence Free Poetry Group unfortunately were unable to make it tonight.
Hello, I'm Jackie McCall, I'm principal at Langston Hughes, and I have the proud honor of introducing Kaylee Clancy for the second time this year winning a poster contest, and this time she's won the Fair Housing Poster Contest, she continues to make our Langston Hughes Elementary very proud, and we'll show you her work, it's very awesome. So, thank you Kaylee, you did a great job, very proud of you.
All right, and I'm Brad Kimpf, West Middle School Principal, and we also had a Fair Housing Poster Contest winner in Yan Ran Lee, sixth grade middle school student, talking about equity in housing, so, here she is.
Nice, okay. Are there any other poster winners?
I think they were just here.
Okay, okay. So we'll move on to the report of the President of the Board of Education. So, two things real quick, one thing, assuming that the last item on the agenda, the CO position, assuming that passes, and we start an interim search process, after that, I just wanted to clarify that that process will be open up both to internal and external candidates, so, just, I know there were some questions, and just wanted to make that clear. Second, the June 1 noon deadline for registering as a candidate for the Board of Education is rapidly approaching, at this point, all I know of is two individuals... Oh, so maybe we have a third one that filed today, but I would encourage anybody that is interested in, we have three open seats, so I encourage anybody that's interested in serving, this is a very important position, and encourage you to do that.
It was my pleasure to speak at the graduation of Lawrence Virtual High School. This weekend, we had our largest graduating class at LVS, 80 students, so congratulations to all of them. Last week, Project Search and the Community Transition Program celebrated the graduation of 12 Project Search interns and four C-Trans young adults, many of whom already have landed jobs, we're proud of their accomplishments and wish them success also. Lawrence High and Free State High Schools will celebrate their respective graduations tomorrow and Wednesday evening at 7:00 in their campus athletic stadiums, I think the weather should hold up hopefully. Also, please add to your calendars our adult education graduation at 7:00 PM on June 1 at South Middle School Auditorium. I want to thank you, thank the community partners who made it possible for all 800 second graders in the district to spend time at Douglas County Fairgrounds last week learning about health and nutrition by rotating through various activities and exploring parts of the human body as they traveled through the Body Adventure exhibit, that's year two with that, and it's quite an ordeal, so, a lot goes into it. I appreciate the work of the foundation and continuing to cultivate a positive relationship with the BOBS group, the foundation presented their 20th $10,000 BOBS Award last week to Stu Strecker, the Free State High School World Languages Department Chairman and Spanish Teacher, number of the students committed, colleagues, parents contributed to that, the letters in the nomination, the common theme was that he connected with kids, which is very obvious. Wednesday is the final day, half day for school, for students in all grades, Thursday's the final teacher contract day, all schools and district offices will be closed on Memorial Day, that's all I got.
Thanks. Next we'll move on to patron commentary. So, USD 497 Board of Education appreciates patrons taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures, we'd set aside this time during every meeting to hear from the public, this is your time to share your opinions, but we ask that you avoid making comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student, including use of personal names. While you're not required to share your contact information, we ask that you do in order to follow up with any specific concerns you might have, in such cases, a board member, superintendent, or another staff member may be in touch with you to refer your concerns to the appropriate administrator for investigation. At that time, we encourage you to share as many details relative to your specific concerns as you're willing to share, and we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Thank you for sharing your thoughts about policies and procedures with the board. And I think we only have one general comment tonight, that is Eric Hyde.
Hello, this is kind of low, let's fix this, all right, thanks, I've never been to one of these things before, so, kind of exciting for me. All right, my name is Eric Hyde, I was born in Lawrence, Kansas, attended schools here K through 12, and graduated in 2004 from LHS. Currently, I am a par educator in a needy classroom with kids that have severe emotional and behavioral disorders. I'm expected to put my own safety at risk in order to keep everyone safe. For example, imagine the 185-day school year, sorry, I'm kind of nervous. This is really important to me, so, all right. It's fair to say that in my 2016 to 2017 year at Prairie Park, I've either been hit, kicked, headbutted, had objects thrown at, bit, stabbed, or my balls literally kicked, at least 185 times. That's working on an average of one per day. But the truth is that some days that number is greater than 20. And how much do you think I get paid? So, I'm, it's upsetting, all right, all right. I get paid 10, 20 an hour, so. Now, I love working with kids, and it's a skill of mine, but I'm concerned I will never escape the poverty bracket due to the lack of compensation. So I ask that you please do what's morally and ethically right. Please increase the wages specifically for ED, par educators, ED is emotionally disturbed pairs, and autism par educators, who work in conditions which are virtually identical. Don't make us wait for bargaining powers to increase our wages, just, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have board commentary, anybody? I mean, typically, we do those when, at the item that you want to speak about, if you would prefer to do it now.
Okay, I just wanted to share with the board that I had the opportunity to attend a recognition at the state Capitol this past Tuesday, KASB was honored for 100 years of service to the state, to the school boards of Kansas, and so Representative Fred Patton in the House, who's a former school board member and KASB president, and Senator Lynn Rogers from Wichita, who is a current sitting school board member in Wichita, were gracious enough to sponsor a resolution in each of their respective bodies recognizing KASB for the work, and they invited representatives from the board to attend, and so I was able to represent our school district and my region, which is Region 1, at that event, and go out on the floor of the House and the Senate and be recognized, and it was really cool, it was a lot of fun, and so I'm very thankful to our, the senator and the representative for being willing to take the time to do that and put forward that resolution and recognize the work that KASB does in supporting our districts across the state, and it was fun because I got to see some of our legislators from Lawrence who were really enthusiastic about the resolutions, so, just want to share that, thanks.
Thanks, Janice.
Yeah, so I won't get to say this tomorrow, but I did want to say it tonight, to congratulations to all of our graduating seniors, you know, it's, I'm pretty sure I don't see any of them here, but I'm going to say it anyway, and also, the list of scholarships that these students got was incredibly impressive, I'm sure it will make their parents happy, but if you look at the list of scholarships, some of them have, you know, five, 10 total scholarships, and so it's very impressive, so, congratulations to the graduating seniors in general, and to the individuals who got scholarships, it's an impressive group.
Thanks, Melissa.
I just wanted to piggyback a little bit off of what Rick said, and one of those students just happened to be my daughter that you saw up there today, so, but also I wanted to comment on Eric Hyde, I had the opportunity to meet him, and I know his mother, and I've witnessed some of the students that he's impacted, including my own son, so, I deeply, I appreciate you as a par educator, and I appreciate your service, and I apologize.
Thanks, Melissa, anybody else? Next we'll move on to the consent agenda items, the consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item be removed, the item or items removed are voted on separately. Do you have any retirements? Have a motion?
I move we approve this consent agenda.
Second?
Second. Here. Yes, sorry, yes. I'm sorry, did you say Sandburn? Yes.
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 Okay, next we'll move on to our first report, USD 497 District Leadership Structure for 2017-2018, with Superintendent's Leadership Team.
So I'm going to go ahead and introduce this topic, just kind of set the stage a little bit, so as I came into my role last spring, I conducted a number of listening sessions with staff in every building, collected a lot of information, gained a lot of perspective about what was going on in our schools, what was working well for our staff, and then what may have needed some attention, and based on that, as I came into my position in early July, July 1, I expanded the executive leadership team from four people to six, and then expanded it further to eight midway through the year. This created more voice at the table, at my superintendent's table, in our weekly leadership team meetings, provided me with a lot more insight, multiple perspectives, multiple diverse perspectives in particular. When Assistant Superintendent Angelique Nedved resigned in early March, it set in motion some additional plans regarding how we were going to support our students effectively, supporting our staff and our schools, and setting the school district up for success. A focus in the restructuring has been on utilizing the talents of the people we have in our system, in particular, some of our administrators, and those people who believe wholeheartedly in the mission, the vision, the goals we have in the district, and who can lead in a very progressive mindset, several of those people are here in the audience today. Also want to put a focus on empowering our school district and the school leaders we have to continue developing their skills, growing, stepping up into positions that they can make a positive impact in our school district. And what we're going to share today has been, you know, been planning for months, and it's at this particular moment in time, we're going to present how the leadership would be organized for this coming school year absent the motion and the item that you have coming later in the board meeting, so, this is a separate item, has no relation to that. So with that, we have a presentation we want to share with you that kind of outlines all the different departments, and one of the things I want to do in setting the stage for this is talk about the why. Some of you may be familiar with this image, we've shown it in 50 different bond presentations this year, and a number of different staff meetings, and it's the image we use to kind of center people around why we do what we do, and when you start right in the center of the circle, it's about students, and it's about student success and preparing them for their future. And then, as we move out from that inner circle, we start talking a little bit more about how we do that, and what it takes to make that happen, and so, when you look at that, you can see the school families, you can see that intertwining with Lawrence Public Schools, and all of our different schools, and our staff, nearly 2,000 people are involved with that effort, and then also our community partners and our parents, and then at the top of that, you see, it's all around a student-centered system of support, so, all of this is working in an integrated fashion seamlessly, we hope, and making all that happen so that our students are going to achieve and succeed and graduate future-ready. So when we start with the why, then we start thinking about how do we systematically make that happen, and how you make that happen a lot of times is through structures, leadership structures, and how you organize your people, and how you set them up in positions that can help lead others in the organization and make things happen, and make positive change happen, so, I want to share with you kind of some of the goals behind this leadership plan, and, can you dim the lights just a tad, just a tad? That may help, yeah. So, we came up with, you know, really, six key things, and you could make a long laundry list of things we were trying to do with goals, but we kind of tried to do some high-level things to talk about here, and the first thing, and first and foremost, it's about supporting our students, just like I just mentioned, but also our staff and our schools, and all of that works together, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that specifically in a second, improving our communication, our collaboration, and how we engage the public, how we engage our staff, engage our kids. Number three talks about ensuring consistent implementation of our district goals and initiatives, and that's an important one for us, because, you know, we get feedback that says that X is happening here, Y is happening here, we want that to be pretty seamless, and if it's important to us as a school district, and it aligns with our board goals, then we want to see everybody doing it. Increase accountability, support for positive student outcomes, it's another piece of this, you'll see how we're going to try to do that in relation to our structure and assigning people to those roles, examining our systemic practices, and how we pursue those things with educational equity and excellence mindset, and then also allocating our resources effectively and efficiently. So these are our goals, as we talk through the plan a little bit, hopefully you will see how we intend to meet those goals with some structure changes. So this is the big picture of what the structure, proposed structure would look like for 1718, want to reinforce once again, it's at this particular moment in time. We start at the top, we start with our community, we start with our partners, and then you move down, you look at, and you see the Board of Education, and the elected body here by the community, and then you see the superintendent, and you continue to move down and see, which would be a new position, will be a deputy superintendent, you see Julie off of the superintendent also, because it's a direct report to the superintendent as a communications person, there's a dotted line there, executive director. There's a dotted line there, Executive Director of the Foundation, which is not actually supervised by the superintendent, but is part of, is part of the district. And then you move into the next layer that goes through the executive director positions, Assistant Superintendent, Executive Director positions. This is our executive leadership. And I'm going to have Anna Stubblefield speak to our executive leadership a little bit.
Good evening, Anna Stubblefield. So I'll speak briefly to you about my role as the Deputy Superintendent. This year I had the unique opportunity to be in both worlds of operations and teaching and learning, just given some circumstances that occurred. And one of the things that we gleaned from that is that having someone who was in both worlds and all of the worlds helped us to connect the dots around a lot of things. And there's a, we definitely have room that we definitely can grow in, but this became pretty clear to Kyle when, as he and I had conversations about our initiatives. So as the deputy, my primary responsibility would be to support department leaders and around district initiatives to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're all headed in the same direction. We have people who, all of our Assistant Superintendents and Executive Directors, who are experts and are, you know, focused on their area, but I would work with them to make sure, big picture, that we're all staying aligned and committed to the goals. Also, it will promote effective communication and collaboration across all of the departments as we move forward and continue to engage and dialogue and collaborate with our Delta Council, Equity Council, and our other advisory councils to make sure that we are all working collaboratively around the goals that are established and to promote the best outcomes for all of our students.
Rather than put one lonely box up there or my picture, ugh. These are just a few examples of communication tools we use and some pictures of our schools involved in community engagement. I'm Julie Boyle, Executive Director of Communications and Engagement. As you know, I am preaching to the choir, but sometimes the choir needs rehearsal and sometimes the choir needs new songs. So I will just repeat a few things. Effective school communication and engagement is important in promoting understanding and trust of our schools and also building and maintaining support for our schools. And why do we need community support? Obviously, the willingness of volunteers to serve on our school board requires community support. And as Marcel mentioned, we're coming up on a June 1 deadline for anyone who would like to file. Efforts to recruit, develop, and retain high-quality staff require community support. Effective relationships with our community partners that enrich the education we provide for our students requires community support. Obviously, the foundation and the financial and in-kind donations they're able to raise requires community support. And as was obvious on May 2, when the bond issue passed handily, improving our schools and investing in the future of our kids and our buildings and our schools requires community support. Thankfully, communication and engagement is not just my job. It's everyone's job. And I think Kyle mentioned earlier, we have 2,000 employees in Lawrence Public Schools and it's each of their jobs to help us communicate and engage with families, students, and community. Our schools, I think, do an excellent job and there are many principals here tonight engaging with families and community. But I do think one of the things that we learned this year is just as we have students that need additional support, we have families and community members that need additional outreach and a personal invitation to be involved with our schools. Perhaps they haven't had a positive relationship with schools in the past. So I think our schools have been working very hard this year to reach out in new and different and more personal ways to get multiple perspectives involved and to get some of those people that may not naturally just want to chair the PTO or the site council, but that need to be invited in so they can engage with their children's education. I oversee employee, public, and media relations in that order. Employee relations is my very first priority. That's why I do a daily electronic newsletter, because if our staff are informed and they know what's going on, there's 2,000 of them and they can communicate with so many more people than I can by myself or than the superintendent can or than you can. I serve as the district's Freedom of Information Officer. I don't know if you recall that in July you approved that. And that just means I help people who have record requests. If they've gone through asking a school or asking one of our custodians of records and they need additional help, that's my job to do that. I work with the district legal counsel on that as well. I support the communication needs of our district management and safety team when the school buildings have emergencies and we need to make sure everyone is informed and they get the support that they need. I coordinate the district's employee and volunteer recognition programs and also district special events like the Staff Mixer. And then, of course, I oversee the content management of our staff electronic newsletter, the district's quarterly newsletter, which is an insert in the Journal World, our website, our Facebook page. And we do have a public access television channel, but sometimes it gets low on my priority list, but it is there and we do want to use it the best we can. I'm the district's liaison to the United Way and the Kansas Collection at the University of Kansas Spencer Research Library. Why? That is where district archives are housed. So if people need something about district history, it's probably there and I can point them in that direction. I probably can't find it for them, but I can tell them who to call. And then I also, under my job description, participate in professional organizations. We have a Douglas County Public Information Officers Group. We also have a Kansas Association of PIOs. And I'm on the Kansas School Public Relations Association. I'm the member support chair for that group statewide. So I just wanted to share a little bit about communications and engagement. I will help Jerry.
So earlier this year, we had a phone call and they asked for our marketing team. And I think Julie put them on hold and said, let me consult with the marketing team and then talk to them again. So, but she's the marketing team. But actually, how you articulated that is everybody is the marketing team.
Okay. Airplane that I want is not showing up. Did we get a code? No? I do have handouts in case. The, well, maybe we could put it on here. I don't know why our ESDC is not showing up.
ITC?
Yeah. That's, oh.
Oh, it's there.
It's there. Wow. Okay.
Do we need to push one of these?
I think we're there. Well, ah, here we go. So I've been in education a long time and I've always hoped for the day when technology and curriculum and instruction didn't have to be separate entities. I think that we live in a ubiquitous society as far as technology is concerned. We use it all the time. We use it everywhere and I think it's changing so fast, we don't even realize how much we use it. And so when we talked about putting technology and teaching and learning together, it really makes sense. So I wanted to create just a little visual to show you what this department would look like. And so I use the term a lot under my umbrella, so I just thought I'd just use that umbrella. And of course, I had to put some clouds out there with the Wi-Fi because, you know, if we're not connected to the cloud, we're probably not working very well. So what I would like to show you is the different aspects. The one thing I want to point out first is I have them in nice little boxes. It's not this cut and dried. Everything moves with everything else. So it's not one little box is one person. So I hope you understand that. So, oop, I'm turning it there. So on the first one, we have the student outcomes and success. And that is our testing. Ooh, and I really messed that up. There we go. So if we look at the testing, I listed several of the tests that we do, including the MAP, RCI 3T, Common Assessments, kindergarten readiness, and you can read through all of that. Also, working with Skyward and our student information system falls in that area. Also, in this department, we have the Learning and Instructional Resources and that is keeping track of everything. We even put our laptops and iPads through the resource management. It's also taking care of the curriculum. If we need textbooks, if we need online resources, fine arts resources, device checkouts, all of that falls in that area. The third area is technology support. And technology support falls in all of these areas. Every one of them utilizes technology in some way. But not only do the tech, does the tech department deploy the devices, they manage them, they work with the network, the Wi-Fi, the help desk, building techno, we have our building technicians and our professional development and device phone camera support, all of those supports as well. Then we would also have in the department, the professional learning and technology. A lot of PD going on. We've talked about the importance of PD as we deploy more devices into the district. So we try to make it a variety of ways that staff can learn. They can come to PD days. We have some in the summer. We also have atomic learning that they can log on and get just-in-time information about whatever it is they want to learn. It has thousands of different catalogued videos. Each year, for the past two years, we've had a Google Apps for Education Summit. We have one-to-one time with Joe Smizer at a coffee shop in the summer. So if you want to come and just have some downtime with a group of people and learn whatever it is you need, we have that as well. And then we need to offer training on new materials and job embedded coaching support. Also, under leading and learning would be innovation. And when we look at innovation, we're looking, of course, at our College and Career Center. The expansion of virtual education, we're doing a little more with virtual education in our brick-and-mortar high schools to offer students more personalized learning. Project-based learning, we have had some pilot schools this year and have had good results and we would like to continue to look at that. And then our Learning Forward Future Ready and the expansion of devices in all of our schools. So all of our schools will get more devices next year, including our elementary schools. We pulled in all of the iPads and MacBooks from the pilot study that we did. And so each classroom will have five MacBooks and five iPads. So all of our elementary classes will have more support. So we're excited about that. And then I wanted to speak just a moment about personalized learning. And I call it personalized learning 2.0. It is really a national conversation right now. People started with blended learning. When we rolled out devices, people were saying, how do we blend traditional learning with technology? And now that we have dipped our toe in that and have done fairly well with that, Lawrence Public Schools, as well as schools across the country, are saying, we need to move more towards personalized learning. Blended is one way that we can do it. A textbook is another way we can personalize learning. We can personalize it with project-based learning. We can personalize it in many different ways. But blended is not the only way. And so we want to look at that expansion of making sure that we meet everyone's needs. So I think it's important that we get that message out. What's the difference between blended and personalized? And really, if you think about personalized is kind of the umbrella and blended is just one aspect in that umbrella. So finally, at the bottom of the page are the supports. The directors, assistant directors, supervisors, and assistant superintendent. And we're hoping that the new, the way that we are putting people in place will have more of a direct impact to schools and principals and teachers. Also, the learning coaches being housed in the schools now on a full-time basis and not having the curriculum facilitators here in ESDC. We're hoping more boots on the ground, more support in the schools. So questions about that? Okay.
I think a few of our new people that were on approval for tonight, actually, and we've made announcements about her in the audience, Director of High School Support, Rick Henry. Rick, give a little wave there. So Rick is going to be the new Director of High School Support. Director of Middle School Support, I don't know if Jennifer Besslo is here or not. Jennifer, nope, don't see her. Darcy Kraus, I know Darcy's here. Darcy giveaway, Director of Elementary School Support. So, and this is, actually, the slide back was the one that we're referencing, but you can see how we merge the two departments between teaching and learning and innovation technology into one, Learning and Leadership Department.
And Kevin Harrell, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education. And, you know, the personalized and traditional, I'll go back to the traditional, here we go. So for Special Education and Student Services, it's important that we keep Special Education and Student Services separate. Federal and state requirements, Special Education is required to have a Director of Special Education. So that's my role for Special Education. And for Special Education, there's two and a half Special Ed administrators. We have one that deals strictly with elementary, our elementary buildings, our families, our teachers, our elementary programs. And then we have someone that works directly with our secondary programs, so grade six through age 21 and our transition programs. And then we have one that works with early childhood special education, but also as Chris Anderson transitions into her retirement, one of them will also take over early childhood and working with district early childhood programs and working with the community. And then also for Student Services, there's an Assistant Director who says equity and student support, understanding that equity is not just one person's responsibility. Part of it is we know that everyone in our district and all of our administrators are expected to be equity leaders in our district. For this position, it really, some of the focus is on some of the bigger things, so beyond diversity, our Equity Advisory Council, our Delta, sorry, Delta. So some of those specific things. And also working with Avid ESL and some of those other programs that support students. And then also working with Native American Student Services Coordinator is also there.
I baby them. I have to push the button for them.
So we're kind of on the technical side. We're wanting to soften that a little bit by using employee relations and support. So the staff was kind of talking about how they were going to answer the phone and maybe it would be ER and so-and-so, but we decided maybe not answering the phone that way, but actually saying employee relations so that we can emphasize the fact that we are here to support our staff. We do that through payroll benefits, managing leave situations, both the FMLA leave protection laws, as well as the district leaves that are available. And there are several that we have available for our staff. We ensure compliance with state and federal laws. We have a lot of work in that area. We are self-insured and work is compensation and so we manage that component as well. We then also look at, one of the things that we're really talking about doing is being able for our staff to have some understanding about what happens in the buildings and for the buildings to actually see some of our staff developing a rotation next year where our actual people that are doing payroll and benefits and personnel support are going to spend some time in the buildings next year so that they can begin to understand what actually happens in the classroom. We don't get into the buildings enough in our department. I'm out in the buildings a lot, but not all of them all the time. So that's one of the things that we think will help staff understand that these are real people, they're there to help. And an example of that would be when we do online enrollment for benefits, when we're not involved in construction, we're actually in the buildings, meeting with staff about their benefits. And they really appreciate the fact that they don't have to come up to the central office to do that. So that's something that we're happy we can get back into the elementary schools, particularly this next year on our open enrollment. Do a lot of hiring, recruitment fairs, both in-state and out-of-state, HBCUs. We had, actually participated in a diversity fair. We had, actually participated in a diversity fair virtually, went to us. It's a conference where you have a number of sped teachers, and so, you can really focus on trying to attract special education teachers to the district. We did an in-district teacher fair this year, had 65 people show up, and so, we'll continue to develop that. Had really good success there. I had a paraffaire, 25 attendees, and we were able to hire some of those people. We also are part of the Leadership Academy and working with what's currently teaching and learning with administrative PD. There's a separate report tonight on that, so I won't get into details there. And then, continue to work a little bit on our thriving culture so that we can build upon the professional development we did at the beginning of this year as we move into next year and try to enhance that. So, we touch a lot of areas in what will be human, employee relations and support in helping our staff be able to concentrate on the task of educating kids and not worry about whether paycheck's going to be there, what their benefits might be, and things like that.
Okay. One of the other areas that I will continue to work collaboratively with and oversee is finance, and Kathy Johnson and her team. We, Kathy and I meet on a fairly regular basis, and we are constantly looking at, are we allocating our resources in the most equitable way? So, we will continue to do that. And with this new structure, we will look at where our resources are being allocated to make sure that we're allocating them to address equity concerns and other concerns that have come up, but also to make sure that we are staying within the legal guidelines as well. And then, next department is nutrition and wellness and printing and purchase, which is led up by Paula Murish. And one of the crossovers here is the health and wellness component, as well as the nutrition and wellness. And we know that for our employees and our staff, that it doesn't matter what we do if their mental health and their wellness is not being addressed, that we won't be able to meet any of their needs. So, that is a key component, and we work collaboratively on that to make sure we're addressing those needs. And also, in our printing and purchasing and warehouse, the items that our teachers and our staff need to provide instruction, we need to make sure that we're getting that out as quickly and equitably as possible as well.
Tony Barron, I'll run through this really quick. Our Facilities and Operations Support, one of our main goals is to enhance, improve, excuse me, improve the teaching and learning environments for our students and staff. By doing that, we try to provide consistent resources, consistent teaching walls, breakout spaces, learning pockets, try to provide transparency, just to make the job of the teacher a little bit easier. I know it's a difficult job. Also, what we've also been doing is providing tables and chairs and new casework in all of our new constructed classrooms. Also, one of our main focuses, efficiency and sustainability. Going through that, high-performance, energy-efficient systems. We've been putting a lot of our variable refrigerant flow systems, referred to as a VRF, in our schools. Each teacher is allowed individual control of their room by putting heat, air, whatever temperature they like, within the boundaries that we set. And so, that's something that's been really important. Along with that, we have dedicated outdoor air supply units, which increases the health of the classroom. And what it does is it brings in room-neutral air at 70 degrees, and it just provides, it brings in the air and lets the HVAC system work less than what it would have to if it was conditioning that air itself. Also, provides for a carbon dioxide exchange of bringing the CO2 out of the classroom, bringing fresh air in, which makes for a better environment for our students and staff. Daylight harvesting, lighting, improving the indoor air quality by putting polished concrete floors, corridors. Not only does that allow us to clean the floor in a more efficient manner, it does not let the carpet take in allergens and things like that. Also, provides for a safer environment for our custodians. No waxing, less time to wax in the summer, less workman comp claims, and it's also a lot safer. The wax that we use is a very, it's very detrimental to the health with rubber gloves and goggles. So, it eliminates that step, which saves us more time in the summer. Also, Aquias Ozon Water Technology, which is really cool, provides less chemicals, less time for us to clean restrooms. I believe you guys are familiar with that process. We brought that to the board, but really, really good. And also, allowing our custodians to clean for health instead of clean for cleanliness. We want to clean for health by wiping doorknobs down, being more finish efficient that way. Safety and security, we provide security entries. We've also tried to enhance the check-in and checkout system in and out of our schools. Just real quick, by the numbers, we manage 27 sites and we're responsible for the leadership of 104 employees, 72 of those are custodians. We do 6 million square feet of green space is what we take care of, 2 million, approximately 2 million square feet of floor space, which equates to about 30,000 square feet per custodian in the district. 1.6 million square foot of roofs, 362 identified sections. Our staff takes in 9,233 work orders a year, 286 per employee. Also, we have outside facility use that we manage. We host, outside of our normal eight-to-three day, we host 11,055 events in a 12-month period, and we activate those requests in approximately 4.82 days, and we process payments on 95% of those. We take 580 reservations for vehicles. We have approximately $1.876 million general fund budget, a little bit over $2 million utility budget. I won't call that a budget. We spend over $2 million in utilities. Also, we manage a four-point, approximately out of the $12 million capital improvement plan, we manage, directly manage about $4.5 million of that. Out of that $4.5 million, we probably have about 150 transactions slash line items that we use, that 4.5 million out of. So, just real quick, I just wanted to share those numbers with you, and that's my part.
So, that goes through all the different departments, kind of shows you a little bit about the changes that we're looking at. In some departments, it's minimal, and others, it's a little bit more substantial. Obviously, there's some changes with titles, and some of that's around messaging, about branding, about, you know, making sure that people understand what we do and how we're going to support them. But, when I, one of the kind of final things here, structure and titles doesn't equate to success. That doesn't really mean anything, and it's more about the people, the people we employ, the people who are in leadership roles, and then, how they interact with one another and make things happen. And so, that's what this is about. The structure is needed, but it's more about the people in the spots that are the essentials. So, typically, board approval on our organizational chart happens at the first July meeting because that's our organizational meeting. It can happen at any time, so it's not that magic, July 3rd's not our magical date for this to occur. It can certainly happen before then. But tonight was just about presenting that and the changes, and at this moment in time. So, any questions you may have?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just say, I think that particularly the move toward having individual directors for our three levels and providing more direct support for principals is a big step for our district. I think that's a really positive step. I also think that instituting a deputy position is a really big deal for our district. We are, you know, I put together some numbers for another purpose tonight, but I was looking back over the data, and, you know, our district has grown substantially in the last 20 years, and we really are at that point where it seems like we need to have additional support for the things that we're asking our staff to do. And so, I'm really excited to see, to see that position, and as Anna mentioned, to see that position really take on a lot of our collaboration work with the community, especially around our equity work. That is so, so important, obviously. It's been such a focus of our discussions this year, and it just, that's such a positive move, and I'm really glad that, to see that as part of, as part of the plan.
Thanks, Shannon. Yeah, I would echo what I've seen over, since I've been on the board, I came on three years ago, about, I would say during, even during that time, it seems like we've reached a point where we need a deputy to assist the superintendent to handle all the functions. So, yeah, I would agree. Next, we have. Sorry. The inaugural year of USD 497 Teacher Leader Academy with Anna Stubbefield, Assistant Superintendent, Educational Support and Equity, and Sam Marie Devon, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. As Sam Marie is pulling this up, this was the, last year, as Kyle took over as superintendent, one of the things that we discussed was providing an opportunity to develop our teacher leaders, those who had aspirations to be administrators. And so, Sam Marie and I took on this task this year, and I will just start by saying that we learned a lot from the teachers that were in there, but we also enjoyed the year a great deal. This program, it was a one-year program. This year, we decided as a one-year program, like I said, to provide opportunities for teacher leaders, and we also worked with them to develop their competencies around shared vision and mission, focus on effective instruction, collaboration, and communication, and also, looking at the operational size of what keeps school running. A lot of our leadership around topics focused around technical and adaptive leadership. Each session that we met with them, we would share an adaptive challenge with them and just talk through what we learned from those things and what they learned or observed as well. We had guest speakers from within the district. I'm kind of skipping ahead, I'm sure Sam Marie is thinking that. Our first class, we opened the application process in August. The prerequisites were to have at least three years of successful teaching experience and be enrolled or be willing to enroll in an administrative licensure program. They had to have a recommendation from their supervisor. We had 24 candidates that we selected this year. Actually, we had more than that to apply. 10 of them were from elementary, 12 were secondary, and one person was split. Of that, because I know people are running about the demographics, two were staff of color and the other 22 were not. We did have two staff of color who showed interest for the upcoming year, they just had some conflict in their schedules. So, we like, we're proud to say that five of those candidates are moving on to administrative roles next year. One is moving on to a role within the district, but majority of those who are moving on did tell us that some of the things that we addressed in this session helped them to prepare for those roles. Our session format typically consisted of an update on what was happening in the district. So, we talked about all of the things that happened in the district this year, and we just talked about the adaptive challenge, adaptive leadership, addressing some of the things that came up, both positive and some of our challenges. We also allowed them to share their experiences. One of the things that they got an opportunity to do was to provide coverage for principals when they were here in meetings. So, we would collaborate around that, and they would talk about, talk through things and what they learned from them, how they can grow from them, and just the day-to-day things that occurred. We, as I said before, we had a guest speaker from each one of our departments. We didn't get to all of them this year, but they would share a leadership challenge that they were actually facing currently in this school year. And then, we also opened it up to hot topics of interest, which some of the things that they brought up was resume. We looked at how resumes look very different today than they did just two to three years ago, gave tips around that, talked about the interview process, and other things that they would bring up around that. We did take the opportunity, which Sam Marie is going to talk about, to get some feedback, both positive and areas that we can grow in in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Sam Marie Devon. And as you can see, there was lots of positive comments. The last session that we had in May, we asked for them to really be honest with us because we wanted this to be a valuable experience for them as they go about developing their leadership vision and mission. So, as you can see, we, I'm not going to go through each one, but just, I think that one of the overall themes that you can, that we gleaned from this was the experience that they had when they had the opportunity to step in as a role as a leader in the building with their, when their principal was gone. And not only just being able to navigate that, but also to be able to have those really great conversations with their principal when they came back. They said that was really valuable to them. So, being able to collaborate, thinking about, and then, a couple of them would say, "Wow", you know, it was a lot, it was a lot, how they juggle, and they left me a list of things that I needed to do, and I got to number one and never saw the rest of the list again. So, they realized what a demanding job it is, is being a building leader each day. And then, they talked about their university coursework that they were involved in, and how they can immediately apply what they learned from their university coursework, make it feel real, more authentic situations, and also, the PD that they were involved in in the district the last couple of years. They could, they could put some of that in practice, too. Again, here, here's, let me see here, oops. The second list there kind of continues to grow there. One of the comments was they wish that it was a two-year experience, and that's what Anna and I are going to work on this summer, is to kind of provide this feedback and see how we can grow it. We did not get to a lot of the topics that they wanted to cover, so when we go to do our planning this summer, we're really going to use this feedback that they, that they have given us. So, it was really powerful. I think they enjoyed the conversations in class. So, yeah, that's some of the positive feedback we received. And then, some ways to grow, and we all, we all know we love feedback to be able to improve. We started off with the book study. It was a Michael Follin book, The Principal, and we started off with that. We kind of dropped off with that with some other things that came in the forefront, so maybe getting back that, that book back out and discussing that more. And then, being able to shadow a principal while the principal is there was powerful. I know they do that a little bit in their coursework, but wanted to have more opportunities to do that. And I think what we need to do is, as Anna and I need to do a better job of, of having more in-depth conversations with our principals about what is the Leadership Academy, and how can you have conversations, instruct those conversations to be able to build the capacity that we need to have, our teacher leaders to have, too. So, those are some things that we're going to work on, and also, again, hear from all the departments, and we'll be able to do that when we expand it within two years. So, we, we have a lot, a lot of great feedback that is going to be exciting to be able to plan for the next couple of years.
So, as we look forward to next year, a couple of things that we are going to do is open up applications for next year. We'll open them up this week, and actually, we'll give people time to complete them through early August next year. And we also told the candidates who were not selected that they don't have to resubmit the application because we still have their application on file, they, so we will not make them do the work twice. We will allow the first cohort group, the opportunity to continue into next year's Leadership Academy as a separate group, just to cover some of the things that we didn't get to this year. We probably won't meet on a monthly basis, but we will provide that opportunity to those candidates who want to continue to develop their leadership. So, we'll have two groups going. And for next year, we are going to probably start out saying it's a two-year program because there is lots to cover, and we won't be able to do it in one year. The other thing that we're exploring, and we hope to have more details on, is how to support opportunities for our classified staff aspiring to be classroom teachers. So, we're going to create some sort of, we're still exploring it, that's why it says exploring. But we recognize that that is untapped group, that several of them do have aspirations to be teachers, and probably, we can provide some structures and support around programs that are friendly to classified staff who are working full-time, and also, for those who are enrolled, because we know we have classified staff that are enrolled in coursework, provide an opportunity to have some of our district leadership team and some of our teachers there as a resource to help them through the coursework if they have questions and things around assignments that may come up. So, that's what we are planning for next year. And that's our quick little overview. But Sam and I really did enjoy it. We think most, we think our, they act like they liked meeting with us. So, honestly, we think they enjoyed it as well, and the time would fly by so quickly. So, that's why we are planning to continue with that group and also, open it up. We will lean on some others to help us through this because it has been valuable for our on some others to help us through this because it has been valuable for our future administrators.
Any questions?
I have one, and that is, so, as we evaluate, I do think it's a great idea. I especially love the idea about helping classified staff who are interested in becoming teachers get support to do that. As we evaluate how many people we're supporting that then go to other districts rather than stay in our own, are we going to determine whether or not it's something, I don't know, I guess my question is, if we're putting a lot of district resources in a program that encourages people to go elsewhere, that would be something we'd want to reevaluate?
Yeah. So, one of the challenges is that, like, at the secondary level, we only have one actual position that opened. And at the middle school level, where there's an assistant principal, and that's typically an entry-level position, we were able to hire internally. At the elementary level, we are really looking at how we can provide opportunities to those elementary candidates, so they will be ready to step into our elementary buildings. But it's about trying to balance our actual opportunities and meeting the needs of our school communities and our parent communities as far as making sure that the candidates are prepared. So, I think as we continue to develop it, I would say next year, we would definitely have some of our candidates that could step into an elementary building just by some of the exposure and things that we're providing them.
Thanks.
Since you're planning to hold over the cohort from this year, how many new positions do you think you'll be able to take on for the next class?
Twenty-four is a good number that we can manage, and the, of the, so, we'll have about 19 who would have the option to be in the second year, but that'll be a little different because it won't be as frequent. So, I know we're biting off a lot, but we, it's, we think it's a good thing, and we think we'll be able to do it.
And you were meeting about once a month?
We met once a month, four hour and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks.
So, really proud of this program. Thank you to Samara and Anna and the work they've done. I enjoyed getting to speak with this group. A lot of young energy and talent, not only in this group, but in the district. So, there was a waiting list to get in that program. And I think philosophically, one of the things that is really important to us is not only when we talk grow your own, it is kind of, to Vanessa's comment, grow your own educational leaders within your system, and then universally. I think that's really important, and it's kind of a personal mission of mine, so.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay. So, next item is the approval of the Chief Operations Officer position and contract. And just, you'll note that Superintendent Hayden stepping out. So, just since it involves us, the motion and us voting on transferring him to the CEO position, he felt appropriate to step out. I agree. It's just similar to, he was not present at the Wednesday meeting as well because of that reason. So, this, how I see this happening, and Janice, you can correct me if I get a procedural issue wrong, but if any board member has some additional information in general that they want to share, and I know Shannon has some information she wants to share, we'll do that. Then, we'll have patron comments, and then, there's some additional discussion, some responses to the comments. Anybody that has, that wants to do, we can do that. And then, any one last statement that anybody wants to make before we do the motion and vote. Is that?
Julie, can you help me? Well, I wanted to start off to respond to a gentleman who asked a question during patron commentary at our special meeting on Wednesday, and I promised him I would follow up and get the information he was asking for, and I did that, and wanted to also honor the commitment to share it publicly. So, so what this is, I reached out to the data guru at KASB, and he was able to help me access the data that KSDE collects every February on staffing for districts across the state. And so, what this shows, this goes to the point that I was making with some different data at our last, at our last meeting about staffing levels and the perception that I hear sometimes in the community that we're overstaffed at the administrative level, that we're, that we're top-heavy. So, what, I disagree with that, and I was able to look at, you know, find the actual ratios, which was what the gentleman had asked for, because the data I was talking about had to do with spending on salaries per pupil ratio, which I can see how, you know, you could maybe think, all right, we're, we're, different-sized districts are going to have different spending. They may have different salaries. So, what this shows is data from KASD for this February, a ratio of student to, or staff member to students in two different areas. It shows core support and what, what the report, and I tried to copy and paste the list of staff to put on here, but I was having trouble making that work. So, that was my own technology fail. But what the, what the core support area is, is really what I think people typically think of as district-level staff. So, it's your superintendent, your assistant superintendents, your deputies, your executive directors, your directors, all of the teaching and learning staff at the district office level. KSDE defines those as core support positions. The non-core support positions would be more of what we think of as the business side. So, so, facilities and operations, maintenance, technology, areas like that. And so, when you look down through this chart, and then, the piece on the, I'll just get back to the chart in a sec. The piece on the other side is that data I mentioned earlier about how our enrollment has grown over time. And we really have become a much bigger district over the last number of years. So, so, core support, if you look at that, you know, for all of these districts, and I, and the ones I had on here, I had kind of a mix of one, of districts in our area, and then, looking back at the chart of district sizes, like the top 25 districts in the state, we often talk about Salina as a comparator, but it also turns out that Gary County and Garden City follow Lawrence. In the, in the chart, Lawrence, Gary County, Garden City. So, Gary County is Junction City. So, I included them because they're districts that are some, you know, the next one's down similarly sized. And then, again, the last line is that Kansas State average. And so, it really does bear out that when you look at those districts, we are less heavily staffed at the core, particularly at the core support level than, you know, a wide variety of districts that we think of as our peers and similar districts across the state. Non-core support, the numbers are a little bit closer. You know, I think Blue Valley, for example, is a little less heavily staffed. Gary County is pretty close to us. Olath, not too far off, but you can see in some of the other districts, the numbers are, start to spread out a little bit. So, I wanted, I wanted to share that because that was, that was a great question, and, and it was good data to be able to share. I had a second chart that, as I was digging through the data that was available, Julie's going to pull it up now. So, what this is, is a chart that summarizes that, that data, that, that change in staffing over the period of 1998 to 2016. It does not include 2017, but it includes up to 2016. And you can see, this is just for Lawrence. And you can see that over time, our staffing changes have been extremely heavily weighted in the area of direct educators. So, that, that category includes all of our teachers, all of our paras, people who work with students, our counselors, school psychologists, library, media specialists, the, you know, people that you think of in the building who are working with students, would fall into that direct educator category. Non-core support, again, the maintenance, facilities, operations, business side of the district. And then, our district between 1998 and 2016 has actually lost staff at the core support, in the core support category over that period of time. There have been, I looked at the data kind of across the line, you know, year by year by year. There have been some fluctuations up and down, but I thought it was really, I thought this, this chart was really striking to make, to make that point that, sure, I know people don't always understand what our district office, our district-level administrators are doing, because they don't see them every day in the schools. They don't interact with them on a regular basis. But what they do is, it makes it possible for us to have, to have our teachers do what they do in the classroom, and we're not too heavy in that area. And in fact, we're lighter than we used to be. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that and answer any questions if anybody had any. Okay. Thanks.
Does anybody else have any general information they want to share? Okay. So, we'll move on to the comments. First is Leonard Ortiz.
Good evening. There isn't really enough time to, for me to discuss some of the other issues related to the appointment of a COO in terms of equity or fiscal responsibility. But I do have some observations related to that. And again, my observations are focusing on the process and not the individual. I wanted to point out that on May 12th, it was reported that the DS was resigning, and seven days later, on May 19th, it was reported by the district that the district had misused the word resignation. And in fact, the district superintendent had not resigned, but instead, at the direction of the board, would be transferred to the position of Chief Operating Officer. And I thought that was rather surprising, that all of a sudden, a week later, that they wanted to clarify that. And my question was, why didn't the board qualify that misunderstanding at the Wednesday meeting on May 17th? Why wait until the 19th to clarify that the DS wasn't resigning? It was also suggested in the May 19th release that Mr. Hayden was being transferred at the direction of the board. But how is that possible that this was a board directive when, on the Wednesday meeting, Vice President Kimball stated at the May 19th meeting in response to Ms. Beeson's remarks, quote, "I share your respect for Kyle for coming to us because he did come to us." We, as a board, did not go to Kyle and say, "We don't have confidence in your leadership, and we'd like you to do something else." He came to us and said, "I feel like this is the best thing for me and my family and for the district." If the DS came to the board, what did he propose? What did he mean when he said, "This is the best thing for me, my family, and the district"? Clearly, this was a resignation from his current position to assume the position as COO, and I respect and admire his convictions of wanting to spend time with his family. That is very commendable. But I guess there's some, what we created was two narratives. And this takes me back to the observation that I had made at the Wednesday meeting, when I noted, and these are the words I used that night, "It seems unusual that an employee of the district," in this case, the superintendent, who has been employed for roughly a year, has the power or authority to resign from the DS position in order to create or reinstitute a position of COO. If employees are able to opt out of contracts and assume other positions from within the same organization, what we then have is privilege and entitlement. It is clear that this wasn't a board directive. The recommendation tonight was initiated by the superintendent, not the president or vice president. And believe me, I didn't want to be here tonight. I'm not your antagonist. I'm not a troublemaker. I would rather be home with my family, like many here tonight. But because there continues to be lack of trust between the community and the board, we're here. The lack of trust is rooted in the absence of transparency, and one way for the board to gain the trust of the community is for the board to regroup and start over by initiating this particular action item in a way that is truly transparent and honorable. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to respond first, or we'll wait? Okay. Next, we have Peter Ramar?
Carmen.
Carmen, sorry.
Daniel Carmen.
I'd just like to echo our last speaker and say that I have no, I actually have no problem with Mr. Hayden's move to the COO position. But there, there is an ongoing issue, I think, in the community with the sense of process and with the board. When I'm not here at school board meetings, for my day job, I work for the US government. And one of the things that we work a lot on in my particular role is helping to change the default stance in government from being closed to being open. And what I'm here to do is to suggest that the school board could make a similar pivot from defaulting to close to defaulting to open. I've seen in the last six months that the board has been very open and receptive when the public comes forward and says, "We'd like more information. We'd like there to be a meeting. We'd like the opportunity to provide input." My suggestion to the board would be default to that. You don't need to have to be convinced of that. Assume that we, that we're interested and that we'd like to comment, that we'd like more information by default. The second thing I'd like to talk about and make a suggestion about is that one of the things that we often emphasize in my professional work is the blameless retrospective. That is, looking back at an incident that has happened and talking about it candidly and saying, "How could we learn from this? How could we do things differently next time?" Without trying to assign blame for that, but in a way that surfaces things that went well, things that did not go well, and trying to talk honestly amongst ourselves about how could we do things differently? Because we're always learning. We're always evolving. We're always trying to figure out how to do it better next time. And that's a very helpful ritual, I think, to go through because it sets aside some intentional time to say, "How could we, you know, how could we, how could we improve this the next time?" So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next is Clarence Lang.
Thanks. Let me start by thanking Leonard Ortiz for the comments that he raised last week. And he's actually, it's because of him that I decided to make a comment this evening myself, so I give credit to him. But also, credit to the school board. I appreciate the fact that you all decided to delay a decision about the Chief Operating, Operations Officer's position for a week to allow for more deliberation by the public. And so, I think we have to give credit where credit is due, so I thank you for that. And I'll say that, that there's been some concern about whether the COO position is needed. I accept the board's judgment about the need for this position, and, but what concerns me is how the process has proceeded to echo comments that have been made. I think that the processes have been cloudy, and the messaging has been, has been poor. And I think it's reasonable for us to expect that if there's a position to be created, that there should be an open application process, and there should be some public vetting, whether that application process is internal or otherwise. And it's troubling that filling the position is tied to the superintendent stepping away from his current position. And I hope that you all can appreciate that the optics of this are very, very bad. And I think we have to view this also as an equity issue. And equity is not just about the quality of education for children and children of color and what they're getting. It's also about the composition of the administrators, the staff, the teachers that they're getting for professional, that who are providing it, and the opportunities that they're getting for professional advancement. Board members, several of you have acknowledged a diversity gap in the district, but declaring someone best qualified, as several of you did last week, for a position without a search is the very sort of thing that perpetuates that gap. And for me, the issue is not about your intentions. I don't see that there's any particular personal profit for those of you who are members of the school board, but I think we also have to be mindful of impact. It's not just simply whether we have good intentions, but we have to sort of measure that against what are the actual implications and impact of what we do. And I think frankly, in conclusion, there's a pattern of decision-making that continues to undermine trust among parents and other concerned citizens who have been willing to invest time, energy, and if we think about the bond issue, money into this district for the benefit of our children. This is demoralizing, and I think we really have to do better.
Thank you. Next is, sorry, Sarah Ratner.
Hi, I'm Sarah, and I can't really top what's been said, but I do want to kind of reiterate some things. I'm 26, I grew up here, I went to school K through 12 in Lawrence, and I'm not 100% sold on the fact that everybody in the board thinks that moving or reinstating the COO is the best use of resources. So I do have a little bit more to add than, and has been previously addressed. But the whole time I've gone to school here, it's constantly been, "We don't have enough money," we're, you know, listening to parents, of course. Now I have children who are preparing to enter the school district. I voted for, to pass the bond. But at the time that the bond was being discussed, there was no attachment of reinstating a position to oversee that bond. I understand that it was said that we didn't want to discuss that until we knew that we had bond money to move at the last meeting. However, that last meeting let me know that there was lots of empirical evidence you guys had that said, "This is going to work, this, we had this position before, and it has helped make that." So to me, it felt like there has been some thought put into it, that it could have been addressed when the bond was out. Maybe not saying we will dead-set do this, but this is a way in which we think maybe the bond would go more seamlessly if we reinstate this position. So it's a little frustrating to me that that wasn't addressed, but I think we did a good job of talking about that at the special meeting. I just kind of want to talk about what I heard today, and what I heard in the last meeting, which was that the focus is on kids. And Andy, one of my, one of the other people who came last week, talked about the fact that Tony, I'm sorry I don't remember his last name, but the director of FNO, said to you that without this position, he may not be able to get to every school every time. And he did a really good job of driving home to you, that these were buildings that were suffering, and while that's important, my peers have been up here multiple times talking to you about the humans that are suffering. We had somebody else come in, who's a staff member, who his own family is suffering, not to mention the children that he serves. And that's due to limited budget. So I would just reiterate what Mr. Ortiz said last week, which was that if there is an addition of somebody needed, you know, to make this use of the bond money more efficient, maybe it's not a six-figure staff member. I think that you guys have all done a really good job of talking about, or reemphasizing that this may not be adding somebody, but that this is a time to restructure, and I'm asking you to put your emphasis on restructuring, similar to what everybody else has said to you so far. I think that this is a really good opportunity, and I'll echo what everyone else said, to kind of start to regain the trust of the people that you're here to serve. I'm young, I've got children that are going to start the school system soon, and I'm not all the way discouraged, like a lot of people that I know are. I feel like I can have an effect. But this is a chance for you to reset that board for people who are discouraged, and to kind of really set your image. So I hope that you all take this opportunity to reflect on what's been said to you by the public, by your staff, what we've said to you in this meeting, the special meeting, and meetings before, and take the time to restructure, instead of implementing him, someone into a position that I'm not sure is 100% necessary. Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Ursula Miner.
Good evening. Board President Harmon and USD 497 Board of Education members. The Lawrence branch of the NAACP, in accordance with our stated organizational mission, to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality and rights of all persons, and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. And as active members of the Delta and Equity Advisory Council, and these councils were formed by the district, are required to demonstrate courageous leadership to enact system change, and ensure all decisions made by the Lawrence Public Schools Board of Education are grounded in excellence, equity, and engagement. The Lawrence NAACP learned from attending the meeting and subsequent reporting by Joanna Havisek, Lawrence Journal World, May 18, 2017, that during the executive session Wednesday, board members met with a representative from the Kansas Association of School Boards to discuss the process for finding an interim superintendent. With interims, you generally need to find them really quickly, and it's a little less strenuous as a search process. They want to help, Board Member Beeson said. The NAACP, as advocates of USD 497 students, endorses hiring from within the superintendent's leadership team for this pressing and essential interim superintendent position. Beeson also said that because the candidates have been supplied by the KASB, the school board is also obligated to follow KASB guidelines in interim search. Under the KASB's policy, she said, candidates won't be announced until the day of the interviews, which will likely, won't be public. In light of continuing concerns about the board's lack of transparency, not announcing the candidates in advance would only exasperate frustrations. The NAACP, as advocates for USD 497's families, recognizes this will continue to deteriorate the trust between the board and the community. I think we need an interim superintendent who's a strong leader and a good communicator, and this person's role is really just to hold the ship steady, Beeson said, and work toward carrying out the initiatives and goals the board has already set. The NAACP, as advocates of the USD 497's children's achievement, is committed to working with the district to meet their excellence, equity, and engagement goals. It was stated that our district is staffed with an excellent team of administrators, and the NAACP is confident a person from our district would have a required and necessary background to step in and fill this role fairly seamlessly. This 10-year equity journey must continue. We require an interim that embodies, is trained in, and committed to equity and excellence. In conclusion, the Lawrence branch NAACP requests an immediate response in regards to considering present district leadership from the interim district superintendent appointment. Ursula Miner, Lawrence branch NAACP president, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just really quickly just clarify that. So as I indicated earlier, we are going to consider interior, internal candidates. And also, as far as the publication of the names, we've at least got initial approval from KSB to do it when we publish it, for each meeting, which is up to three days before, I believe. And really, what it boils down to is the willingness of the candidate themselves. So, I mean, that's a discussion that we can have with KSB, as far as any external candidates that we talk to. Do you have anything you want to clarify?
On that point, I think we could, as a board, decide to have interviews, announce when the interviews are, and then commit to having some time between those interviews and the decision, to give the public an opportunity to provide feedback, based upon that, and if the newspaper does interviews with the candidates. Because I think that that's more in the spirit of what the community's asking for, than knowing today or tomorrow who they are. So I think that's something within our control, regardless of what the policies or the candidates want to commit to.
Sure. So I think that would, everybody here would be in agreement with that. Yeah. And then the last person that we have, we have one more. Jesse Brinson.
Once again, thank you for this time this evening, and then for the work that you guys do. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of dedication, a lot of time. I echo much of what Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Lang said, but to say it in my own words, I wish there were more transparency in the process that took place, in coming about the discussion we're having with the current superintendent wanting to transition into being COO. I, in a sense, I kind of wish that there were a line that said, if the school bond is passed, that I would be, would like to transition into being a COO, something of that nature. But I do want to, I think the main thing that I've thought about, even as I was listening to everyone speak, was how the position you've put the community in. If I heard you correctly, Superintendent Hayden approached you to be transitioning to this position. If you, so in a sense, it's saying that he doesn't want to be superintendent, but he would rather be this. If you were to vote him back, or say, to vote no, he's going to stay the superintendent, then as a community member, I'm looking and going, where is the guy who doesn't want to be the superintendent, though? But then if you vote him into the COO, then I'm also looking at what, much of what Mr. Lang said, in the sense of, you know, where could these resources be put better, as far as hiring staff of color, and things of that nature, and putting these resources in other positions? And so, I just wanted to highlight that, that I feel in our lack of being transparent on what we're going after in our community, and with our public school, you've put us in a pretty awkward position. And so, and that's all I got, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to address a couple of the things that came up in the public comment, and then just share some general thoughts. First of all, to clarify in regard to Mr. Ortiz's comments, the press release described what was being proposed as a transfer. We, as a board, have been clear about that in our discussions, and I'm pretty sure that at last Wednesday's meeting, that I talked about it in that way as well. I will tell you that I have asked the editor of our paper twice now, this week, specifically to correct that language, and he's told me that he doesn't feel it's necessary. So, I can understand why, when you're reading those articles in the paper, that it seems to contradict what we have said. And I will just say to you, I personally made a specific request to correct that language, because I believe it to be incorrect, and that request was denied twice. I, that's frustr, I feel frustrated by that. I don't think that the word resigned can have multiple meanings. I think it means what it means. And, and, so I just, I wanted to address that. In regard to the comments that Peter made, I really like the idea of kind of taking the opportunity as a board to step back and have an honest conversation with each other about how we handle things and what we can do better. And I think that there's a great opportunity for us to do that going forward. We have talked about scheduling some board, for us, that would really be professional development time, and, and, and that's, that's something that we need to do, and I think it's really helpful to think about it, in the way that you described it, because we all want to do better for the district, and we want the district to do better for our students and our families. And so, being able to have those honest conversations with each other is really important. And I'm, I believe that everyone on the board would say yes, that's, it's important to have our own professional development to help us with that. So, so that's something that we can take forward out of this discussion, and actually take advantage of. In terms of, you know, the process that we've used, I'll just say that I've heard your concerns, and I think that we have a learning opportunity to, when we go through this, our next process, to address personnel issue, that we can learn from that, and hopefully address the community's concerns in a positive way. I do want to say that, at the time that we were going through our bond campaign, we had discussions as a facilities planning committee about, okay, what would we do when the bond passes, what will we need? But it's a very honest answer, that it really felt premature to even start making, to make a commitment publicly about exactly what we thought the right move would be, before we had even gained the community's support to take that, to take that step, and have the bond issue pass. And so, you know, I, I can't, I can't say that I would have done the presentations that I did differently, because I felt like the focus really was on, what are we going to do with the money that we are asking the community to give us? And, and at the end of the day, the administrative staffing doesn't come out of the bond dollars, it comes out of general administrative funds. So all of that being said, I just, I wanted to address a few of those things that came up during the public comment. I, I would restate, and I'm sure it's no surprise, given the presentation that I gave last Wednesday, that I firmly believe that this is the best use of our administrative-level budgetary resources, to meet the needs that we have at this time, and going forward over the next period of time, as we start implementing the bond, to have the COO position. I agree with the community that we need more resources for teaching and learning. My perspective on that is that the legislature is going to have to step up and give us an overall increase in funding, so that we have a reliable funding source to give our teachers raises, to hire back positions that we've eliminated. And when we are able to do that, we have a very firm commitment to equity principles as we are moving through those decisions. So, I, I hope that everyone that's here tonight kind of help, helps us with that, by advocating with our legislators in Topeka. I know that it feels like an uphill battle, it's felt like an uphill battle from where I'm sitting for the past eight years, well, six years, I've been on the board six years, and every year, it's felt like an uphill battle. And this year, it's, I had high hopes at the beginning of the session that we were going to get there, and the longer this drags on, the more concerning it is to me, that we aren't going to end up with a result that honors the work that our school districts do to educate our kids. I do see this as a reordering of existing resources at our administrative level, to meet the needs that we have, the most pressing needs that we have, that we're not already meeting through some of the other organizational moves that we've talked about in the earlier presentation tonight, with the org chart and the realignment. And it's a real advantage to us that we're able to do that without an add to our administrative budget. Because honestly, if it was an add to our administrative-level budget, we probably wouldn't be able to do it. It's, it's, you know, I wouldn't choose to cut teaching positions in order to do this. So, but because we are able to do that, I think it's the best way to meet the needs that we have. And I, and I am glad that we will continue to have the institutional knowledge behind our bond issue implementation. We were very successful on the whole, I mean, there's always hiccups with that size of set of projects, but on the whole, the implementation of the 2013 bond was successful, particularly from the sense that we, we worked very hard on the district's side to make sure that the people that we hired on the construction and architectural side did, delivered on the things that we had promised the community we were going to deliver on. And it takes a Herculean effort on the part of our district staff, to keep that kind of large budget on track, especially when you're working with multiple vendors, multiple construction providers, multiple, in the 2013 bond, we had multiple construction managers, multiple architects. And it's that institutional knowledge that we gain through having this position, and having Kyle be the one that fills it, is frankly irreplaceable. So, I'm fully in support, and I will plan to vote in favor of it. So, thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Melissa.
I talked with the rest of the board members, and I will probably just read off of what I wrote last night, as I was contemplating, but I do plan to abstain from voting, and I understand that I am present, so that automatically counts as a no. And my reasons for abstaining, abstaining from voting, is just being new to the board and all of its policies. I believe the timeframe given to research such an I believe the timeframe given to research such an important issue and such a change and vote on this issue isn't conducive to the deadline that the board is currently setting. So I'm uncomfortable with the process and how the decision is being made. So at this time, I'm going to abstain from this vote, and I appreciate the support of the board members and their understanding.
I was going to wait, but if nobody else has any comments? I will, I will say that, before I read Jessica's statement, I'm in full support of this as well, for many of the reasons that Shannon listed. I'm in as much full support of creating the CEO position and filling it with Superintendent Hayden as I was for the bond. We did a great job communicating why we needed the bond. It's obvious we didn't, we didn't do a very good job of communicating why this was equally an important and really beneficial to the community and to the district. So, I'm, as the president, I'll shoulder the blame for that. And I appreciate Peter's comments about the board needing to reflect. I agree. I think this is something that we will, we will reflect on moving forward. Let me read Jessica's statement here. So, to my fellow, this is from Jessica Beeson. "To my fellow board members and community members, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting as I'm at my daughter's fifth grade graduation from Cordley Elementary School. Despite my absence, I felt it was important to provide a statement regarding the creation of a CEO position and appointing Kyle Hayden to that role. First, I would like to say that I understand there are members of our community who feel this process was not transparent and/or who do not agree with the creation of the position or appointing Kyle without running a search. I valued your feedback over the last week and definitely see how the process could have been more transparent. I will continue to work harder going forward to ensure our decisions are more clear to the public. However, I respectfully disagree with those that feel it is unethical or inappropriate for us to place Kyle in this position. It is a position we had for the implementation of the 2013 bond and one we will need for the upcoming bond. Kyle is not only uniquely qualified for this role, he has proven to be incredibly effective serving in this capacity. He is a highly competent administrator, and the CEO position fits perfectly with his strengths. I truly believe placing Kyle in this position is the best decision for our district at this time. While I'm not there to vote on this issue tonight, I support approving the creation of the CEO position and naming Kyle Hayden as CEO." Jessica Beeson.
CEO.
What did I say?
He said CEO.
Oh, sorry. COO. All right. Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of Kyle Hayden to the position of Chief Operations Officer and related contract effective July 1, 2017.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Janice?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Inger?
Yes.
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
The motion passes twice.
All right. I think so. So do we have a motion for adjournment?
I move adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.